Okay, good evening. I call the March eighth, twenty twenty-three. Meeting of the Berlin sort of appeals to order at seven P M. This meeting is being recorded and all participants and attendees are advised that they may have their image, voice, forehand telephone number recorded for the record. Um, do we have any audience at all?
Uh, Louise Janda is with us. That's it so far.
Okay, let me introduce the members of the board. As I call your name, please respond with present and raise your hand. Um, Jim Roya.
Hello.
Danny Batlett.
Hi.
Um, Pat Jackson. Jenny Zakatinsky.
Present.
I see Suzanne is not here yet. Keith Suzie.
Here.
And I'm Lynn Ryan here. Okay, um, we, the first, um, external stuff we need to do is at seven thirty, so let's, um, go to the approval of the minutes. And this would be.
Do we approve the minutes from the?
February eight.
Second.
Any discussion? If not, I'll do a roll call. Keith?
Hi.
Jenny?
Hi.
Um, Jim?
Hi.
Danny?
Hi.
And Pat?
Hi.
I'm an I. Um, then we have, let's see. Uh, there's no warrants or anything for you to report on, uh, the Danny?
No.
Okay. Communications.
Uh, Lynn, before communications, we, I put on the agenda, the approval of the twenty-two annual report.
Yes. Um, okay, well, let's deal with that first. Um, has everyone had a chance to see the annual report?
Mm-hmm, yep.
If so, I'll enter motion to approve it re-
I'll make a motion to approve as written.
Okay, is there a second, please?
I will second.
Okay. I'll do a roll call vote unless someone has any questions or comments. Uh, Keith?
Hi.
Jenny?
Hi.
Jim?
Hi.
Danny?
Hi.
Pat?
Hi.
And I'll be self-serving and vote I. Um, communications. Everyone get, uh, Leanne's note about the CPTC annual conference on March eighteenth?
Yes.
Is anyone planning to go? Okay, I think I'm gonna, um, plan on going.
I think Susanna might have been planning on it as well.
I'm sorry?
I think Susanna may have been planning on attending as well.
Okay. So that means that, um, is it? Yep. Okay. No kisses, no kisses. Um, don't jump. Yeah, go see your mother.
Here comes Susanna.
Oh, okay, we can ask her about the, um, CPTC.
Hello.
Hi.
Hi.
Susanna, are you planning on attending the CPTC annual conference?
I am, signed up and paid for.
Excellent. Oh, you paid for it already, because, um, you'll need to, um, get an expense reimbursement form and fill it out.
Is that online or?
I can get one to you.
Thank you.
Send it to both of us.
Okay.
I'm planning on going, so maybe we can go together, um, Susanna. Um, does it, I got from James, the assistant town clerk, um, a spreadsheet that includes through twenty-twenty-two of our, um, hearings. Um, I'm gonna ask Keith, if I send it to you, could you update the spreadsheet you created?
I created a spreadsheet for the, oh, that one, yep.
Do you know what I mean? What you're gonna need to do probably is sort both, he's got the whole thing there, and you just need to add on the last um, three or four years, okay? So I think if you just sort the two of them by the town clerk's numbers, then, um, add that to the one you have and we'll be all set. Um, I understand from reliable sources, and we're looking into it, um, that we have a file cabinet in the basement. Was anyone aware of that?
Yes.
Oh, yeah? Is that Danny?
Yes.
Okay.
I'm going through more papers over here.
Okay. Um, so we're gonna investigate, uh, getting those, that paperwork out of the basement. Um, what else did I have for you guys? Um, the new spreadsheet, and then, um, Keith can send it back to us, Leanne. And we, we can give it to Pat and, uh, Jenny.
Okay.
I'm Lynn, if I may interrupt, um, I did stop in to see Alois. And she showed me the spreadsheet and was going to forward it to me and asked that I send an email to her requesting it, which I did, and I have not received it, but I'm glad that you have it and that we are able to go forward with.
Well, Keith is adept at manipulating this stuff. Now, he created that new spreadsheet with the extra columns already on it.
Uh-huh.
So my suggestion is, I'll send the one that we got from the town clerk's office to Keith. He can update that other spreadsheet. And then you can work from there, rather than having you to have to type them in or figure out what ones are in there and what ones aren't.
Okay.
Sound good?
Mm-hmm.
Okay. Um, do we have any new petitions? Because the filing, um, deadline is what, next Wednesday for?
It's next Wednesday. There's, there's nothing that I know of. I don't anticipate anything, but there's still another week.
Okay. Uh, what about the availability of you folks for April thirteenth, especially if it's in person?
It's the twelfth.
Oh.
I believe. Yeah, Wednesday is the twelfth.
Okay, I'm sorry. I thought I took that right off of the, um, website for the deadlines.
Oh, but maybe you didn't. I have it wrong.
No, I have it written down as the twelfth.
Okay, excellent. So the meeting's gonna be April twelfth. Okay, who is available for the twelfth? Especially if it's in person.
I am.
I think so, yeah.
I am not. I'm not available on April. Not that you guys will miss me that much, but.
Oh, we'll miss you.
Do we have a hearing?
You're co-host.
I won't be in person.
I don't know right now, because we haven't closed for petitions until like March eighteenth, um, which is like next week. So we could still receive a petition and have a, a hearing. And I expect that this one, um, you'll understand in a couple of minutes, for two seventy-five Central Street will be on that agenda. And that's next to the gas station next to me.
Mm-hmm.
And whether or not we conclude a hundred Carter Street tonight. So those will be the dependencies on what we have. Either Newark, probably two seventy-five Central Street and, um, Carter Street if it, for some reason, gets continued. Okay, the only other thing I wanted to mention was I attended a planning board meeting and so did Susanna on, um, she, we didn't do the same ones, because I had school committee one night. Um, it's probably not appropriate to bring it up now. About two seventy-five Central Street, there was some, um, discussion on it. Um, they aren't really working on any updates to the bylaw, but I think they'd be receptive. Um, it wouldn't make it in time, because the warrant's closed for the May meeting, but if there were a fall meeting, it would be possible. Now, you attended the one, the, well, I don't know what the, was a open forum or uh, town meeting type thing on the Berlin Center project?
Yeah, it seemed to be a repeat of the previous one that I had, uh, gone to. Actually, both of them I did through Zoom. The first one, because I prefer it that way, the second one, because I had COVID, but, um, it seemed to be more of the same.
Okay. And that's the copies of those, uh, do you know if they put them out on, um, what do they put them out on?
Copies, I believe.
I'm sorry?
I believe it's YouTube.
Okay, I didn't, and I don't know if it's even available on the cable. Everyone knows what we're talking about, well, how they wanna change the downtown center? Oh, okay. Um, we did the availability for the next, for the meeting in April. So that's all that I really wanted to discuss with you folks. Does anybody else have any communication questions or comments?
Yes, you, you mentioned or asked about cell towers on Snake Hill or so forth. And at this time, there's two sites that they may be looking at, but it's not etched in stone as of yet.
And is this Verizon that's doing this?
Correct.
Okay.
Did we ever resolve the seven hundred foot, um, or seventy foot difference? Do we know how high they're talking about?
Not as of yet, that I know of. It's still kind of a secret.
What's the other hill, the Snake Hill? Is that, that's not the only one they're still talking about, the Ball Hill or something?
In that area, yes, up on top here, uh, there was a piece that Mike Sawyer owned over in there at one point.
Oh, you'll love that, won't you, Jim?
Well, it depends. If I get decent service, I might be happy, um, but yeah. I know there's a discussion of it. I, I was under the impression that the Ball Hill Road, um, lock was essentially shot down right off of that, but.
Well, my understanding from the planning board is that it was their suggestion that they use Snake Hill as, and not, uh, Ball Hill.
Yeah, I think conservation was involved in that, especially as well, in my understanding, so.
And where are you understanding this from? Were you getting that information?
Discussions here and there.
Are you talking to me, Kate?
Either one. I was talking to Jim, but that's okay.
Well, I was at a planning board meeting when, when the planning board discussed it, and they said they much preferred Snake Hill.
Got it.
Okay, we've got about fifteen minutes. Does anybody have anything they want to do? It's gonna be really strange if we start meeting in person.
I'm gonna have to shower.
Yeah, and be dressed from the waist down, you know?
I was gonna say, I can't attend in my pajamas anymore.
Well, I'm hoping that they extend it as an option, because I think it, it meets the needs of everybody, you know, if you're, you're a young family with small kids, you don't have to hire a city, you can just, you know, log on. And you don't have to bring the kids with you and have them disturb anybody. You, you can just mute yourself and listen. But we need to see, you know, what our uh, legislature has to say about it. And we're all set on budget. I know we asked Jenny that before. Anyone have any suggestions? We should have some money left over. The conference this year is ninety-five dollars. So, um, depending upon whether a Susanna and I ride together, um, you know, there'll be expense sheets for that, but we're talking a couple of hundred dollars.
That'll leave us three hundred bucks.
Right. So, um, Leanne, if you have any suggestions, I mean, in terms of office supplies or anything like that, it would be well.
Okay, I'll, I'll look, but typically I, I, there's not much supplies-wise that I utilize, but.
But if there is anything, you know, we can,
Okay.
we can do that.
Mm-hmm.
Anyone have any suggestions as to, um, anything else we should get? I don't know. I was looking at the date on the chapter forty-eight booklet that I got at the State House that I gave you guys. I don't know if there's been any updates to it or not. Um, you know, it, it must be like four years old, at least, five years old, maybe. So if you happen to go out online and look at chapter forty-eight out there and you see any differences, um, let us know. Um, we haven't heard any more from the gas station on the other side of four ninety-five. Um, Three Gates Pond is in a bit of a titty where Shiro's Restaurant used to be. Um, whether or not they're going to put something on the first floor and have apartments upstairs or rooms upstairs that they rent, or whatever they're gonna do. And I, the old Central Street car dealership, from what I understand, he's kinda gone by the wayside, has he not, Leanne?
That's correct. I haven't heard anything.
Because he was told he would need potable water and a septic system, even if he was the only one working there. And we can thank Al Roseberry for that, because he knew the state law. I think it's state law that he went to.
Correct. Yeah, so he has to appeal with the state if he, if he wants to, uh, get, get around that.
But the guy is kinda funny that's doing the plans for him, because he sent this letter basically saying all they needed, um, was board a health approval, that conservation had approved it, and the building inspector had given his go-ahead. And, you know, it was like, not really. Okay, we got ten minutes. Do you wanna break, or do you wanna? Anything you can chat about? I saw my, down on the Cape, I saw my first crocus in Johnquill. Spring is coming, people.
The skunk cabbage is up.
Really?
Yeah.
I got crocuses beside the house that, about five inches high.
Really?
Yeah, and they had a flock of robins in the backyard before the last snowstorm. Where they went to, I don't know.
Yeah, it's pretty early for them, but of course, it's been warm. And it's been warm down south, too, so, you know, they may think it's later than whatever. We change the time next week, right?
This week, Saturday.
Well, right. Hmm. Which is nice for you folks that, um, do any form of farming, right? Because it's light later, or do you like it light in the early morning?
I like it light later. Yeah, both are even better. Hmm.
Uh, we had jolly group.
Should we pause the recording for the ten minutes that we wait?
Yeah, do you wanna recess for ten minutes?
Um, yeah, eight minutes. We're gonna recess for eight minutes.
Okay.
You can pro- um, Dillis and, um,
Yeah, we have the, um, applicant. We have Seth from, um, Dillis and Roy and a Gary Spalding. I'll start moving them up.
Okay. The ZBA is, um, reconvening after an eight-minute break. And the next item on the agenda is, um, two seventy, is it two seventy-five?
No, it's one hundred.
The one hundred.
Hundred Carter Street, oh. Everybody has their materials and plans and. Okay, is it seven thirty yet, folks?
No, it's seven twenty-nine. Seven thirty.
Okay. I'm going to, um, reconvene the meeting at seven thirty. And we are going to discuss, um, we're going to open the hearing for one-ten Carter Street. Um, they're asking for site plan, special permit, and a variance. Um, who wishes to speak for one hundred Carter?
Lynn?
Yes.
Before you, you do that, I just wanted to let you know that I did verify newspaper advertisement and a butter notification. They met the required deadlines. And three out of the seventeen of butter notices were not picked up by set of butters.
Fine, thank you. Okay, I think, do, who wants to speak for, um, one hundred Carter Street petition?
Madam Chair, this is Seth Thonahoe with Dillis and Roy. I'd be happy to give you an overview of the project.
Thank you, proceed, please.
Okay, and I do have plans. If the board would like me to share my screen, or if your paper copies and documents that were sent to you are sufficient, I can talk through those as well.
I think it would be helpful if you share your screen, only that there are a couple of folks in the audience that may not have copies of the plan.
Okay, so I am going to start sharing my screen. And hopefully, what you can see before you now is the existing conditions plan. And I'll briefly introduce myself. My name is Seth Thonahoe. I'm with Dillis and Roy Civil Design Group. I'm here on behalf of the applicant, Mr. Alan Roseberry. He is the owner of the property and also, um, the business that's currently situated at the site. So this is for one hundred Carter Street, which is identified as map fifteen-point-one parcel seventeen. The site is located in the commercial district. It's, uh, basically across the street from the town's highway yard. Uh, the site contains an existing office building, and my hand is hovering over that on the screen here. There is a detached garage, and then there's a parking area that encompasses much of the easterly side of the site. Uh, the current business needs do require an addition to this building. And if, if you'll bear with me, I will switch over to the proposed plan. And we are proposing an addition on the easterly side of the building. And this addition is within the limits of the existing parking area. Um, the addition, as I've mentioned, is vital for the continued use of the business. The owner has been operating his business there, an office building, for approximately thirty years. The proposed addition is in conformance with all of the town's current setback requirements. We are here before you tonight for a site plan special permit, as that is required for the exterior modification of a commercial building. And as you mentioned at the beginning, we also also require a special permit, and that's due to the westerly side of the building, which is this side that is not being modified. It currently does not meet the zoning setbacks. Though, as I mentioned, the proposed addition will be in full conformance with the required zoning setbacks. And we're also requesting a variance, um, due to the lot size. The gross floor area of the building is limited to three thousand square feet. The existing building actually exceeds that right now, so we're requesting a variance to allow the addition. Uh, it's important to note that the addition is essentially to encompass the existing use of the site. We are not proposing a change in the use. Uh, as Mr. Roseberry's business has grown, he's required to utilize portions of the parking lot on occasion, and he would like to be able to provide a, um, indoor area where he can complete those functions of the business. There are garage bays in this proposed, um, addition, and that'll allow the parking of building, uh, excuse me, vehicles within the garage in addition itself. So that'll be an improvement in the aesthetics of the area as well.
Okay.
Yeah, oh, go right ahead.
Oh, I thought you were completed. Thank you, go ahead.
Well, I have, uh, coming over cold, so a dry mouth tonight, so the less I talk, perhaps the better. Um, I would be happy to address any specific questions, as the board has, or go into more detail on any of the specifics that we proposed.
Well, just especially for those, um, viewing this online, can you tell us the square footage of the existing building and the square footage of the addition?
Sure. So the existing building is thirty-eight hundred square feet. It's, uh, essentially a single-story structure. There is a small, um, upstairs office section of the existing building, number one hundred, in the midsection of the building. The proposed addition is twenty-eight hundred square feet, and much of that is an open garage bay. Uh, the zoning bylaw does not differentiate between, uh, or exclude garage bays like this from the calculation. So that's why we're here for, for a variance for that.
Is this structure pre-existing non-conforming?
It is, and that's the nature of the, uh, special permit. So that's the setback on the westerly side, fifteen-point-one feet, whereas a thirty-foot zoning setback is required. So the dash line is indicating where that zoning setback would cut through the. Line is indicating where that zoning setback would cut through the building. Um, we're in full compliance with the zoning setbacks for the addition. Greater than thirty feet from our side lot line and greater than forty feet from the rear lot line.
What is the square footage of the lot on which these buildings reside or will reside?
The existing square footage is forty-one thousand seventy-seven square feet.
And I I don't know if my colleagues were, but I'm a a little confused. You're talking about lot seventeen? This is what we're discussing this evening. Did you say lot seventeen?
Yes, map fifteen one parcel seventeen.
The um the other lots around it, to whom do they belong?
Uh, so we have on the existing conditions plan, I can zoom in. There's a now formally designation. So uh, this is a gas station building, which is F and N LLC. And I'll probably mispronounce the owners of number forty-three West Street, so forgive me if they're in attendance tonight. Special bachelor. To the rear is Spalding. And then to the east is also Spalding. And as I mentioned, across the street, this is the um the highway barn, highway yard. Um, and also Wheeler is across the street.
Which when you say Spalding for two of the lots, which Spalding is it, please?
Um, I I am not aware. I can certainly pull the deeds if that's something that is germane to this discussion, right?
Are they in Alan's name?
Alan Roseberry is the applicant.
I understand that. Um, but um, all right, which Spalding is? There's two owners, correct?
There's two small, two separate parcels with the last name Spalding. Uh, Mr. Roseberry is on the call as as he's been in business there for many years. It it may be appropriate to ask him if he knows.
Yes, I can answer that. Um, as you're looking at the map, uh ninety-eight Carter Street to the right is Gary Spalding, which is my business partner. For one hundred Carter Street. And the one to the left is Edward Spalding. Yes, Edward Spalding is one owns on West Street.
I I appreciate the clarification.
But Mr. Roseberry, you have no interest in either of these lots. Gary has or Edward has. Okay. Okay, um, let me open it up to my colleagues and see if anybody has questions that would like to present.
Where was the apartment?
I just stopped sharing the screen. It's on it's on the easterly side of the building. There's a dash line. Let me bring that up for you. Those labeled as accessory apartment right here.
Well, that's the apartment down there.
Yep, and there's a dash line. So that area is not being modified.
Is there anyone living in there?
Alan, would you be able to answer that? I I believe I heard an answer in the affirmative.
Yeah, that's correct. There is a tenant that currently lives in the apartment.
Now, when did classification of accessory apartment come? Because usually an accessory apartment. Is part and parcel of a residence.
So we actually outlined the uh board's past decisions in our application package. And I can give you the dates of those.
But you don't have copies of them, do you?
No, it's just a date.
So I don't. So in July tenth nineteen eighty-five, um special permit and site plan review was recruited, completed for an accessory apartment. And then uh November thirteenth of the same year, a variant special permit and site plan for the accessory apartment. So this is, this is something that's been existed. Since the eighties. And I believe when Mr. Roseberry bought the property, it was in existence at that time as well.
That's correct.
Okay, we'll just need to check and see. I know when the bylaw was changed. For in-law apartments. They went to a five-year renewable uh permit and anyone who um had. An existing apartment had five years to apply for. A special permit to go forward. But but that's something that the board will have to look into. Pat, did you have anything else you wanted to ask?
Yeah, in relation to that too, I when I was reading the paperwork, you're not making adjustments because it's all private water. And private septic, but I assume your addition is also and the accessory apartment and the existing building will be all in the same system, right?
Uh, that that is my understanding of it.
Also. Basically, when I was reading about the site plan, you said you didn't have to really do anything because it was existing in. The actual parking lot. But you are also adding three additional walls, like the bays. For the garage or anything. Is that listed anywhere? Just to see where all this stuff comes in and out? I mean, I'm hope I'm.
Before you is the floor plan of the existing building that the applicant has. And then this here is the addition. So essentially they have uh two entrances to it for the bay area. Which is the vast majority of it. Um, and then they have a a small area to access the office, um adding on to that side there.
Okay, an additional lighting, anything else going on there?
So Mr. Roseberry and I discussed that. I mean, it it would be his intent to uh limit to that only to what's required by the building code. Uh, there there's no um overhead lights or anything of that nature, um shielded wall sconces if applicable.
It is required in our bylaw that any lighting signage uh be included in the site plan. And.
I can't, I Alan, is there any um signage proposed with this?
No, no signage and no sight lighting proposed with this.
And there's no existing signage or anything, right?
There is an existing sign on the front of the building on Carter Street.
Yeah, because that's one of the things we need to look at is the size of that existing on the side of the building. Just for your own protection. I would suggest that any existing lighting or proposed lighting or lighting you think you might want to add at a later date. If you put it on the plan, it gets approved. Otherwise, you have to go through the process. Yeah. Are you all set? Um, Pat?
Yeah, right now. Thank you.
Anyone else?
I have um. I had a question concerning um parking. Our bylaw lists a requirement for minimum number of parking spaces. By my calculation, based upon the dimension mentioned. It looks like requires thirteen parking spaces. It's a rough calculation on my part. And uh, the bylaw requires that none of those parking spaces can be in front of the bill. Uh, or closer to the road than the front line of the. So I'm wondering if we meet that requirement.
But we have given a breakdown of parking. Um, as this entire area is presently a parking lot. That essentially doesn't conform to that requirement. We've shown schematically that we can exceed. The parking requirements for the building by quite a bit. So there's actually a parking breakdown. Uh, one space per two hundred fifty gross floor area. Dwelling, one space per unit, and we come up with a total of twenty-eight that can be accommodated there. Now, as you mentioned, that that this existing parking lot is is essentially paved prior to um the existence. Of some of these regulations. So we schematically show that fits. Mr. Roseberry and I discussed the parking uh prior to this meeting. He only has three full-time office employees that are utilizing the building. Um, the rest of his business requires. Vehicles that go to site. So he has fifteen additional employees that take home a company vehicle. While they do report to the office, they also leave and they go to job sites for the day. So they're they're not even using a fraction of what would be required here. So in in the spirit of your bylaw, they can certainly park everybody that's using the building um in conformance with that. And we can also support additional vehicles at the site. Uh, and that includes six vehicles inside the garage bay.
What is the nature of this business? How would you classify it?
It is the office building for a um residential and commercial fire sprinklers. So they sell the sprinklers that are often required by boards like yours or other boards in town to go into structures.
Okay, and how much? In what capacity of the square footage is going to be used? The office space, what's the square footage of the office space? The indoor parking. What is that square footage? What's the square footage of the apartment? What I'm getting at is. Each may exclude or include um requirements of their own. You're gonna need for the apartment, which is really a primary residence, I think. You're gonna need at least one space, just I mean, over and above whatever you're gonna use for business. Perhaps two, I'd have to look it up. This indoor parking, is it just to keep vehicles inside or are you gonna do work on vehicles or? How is that gonna work?
No, it's a first question. The the existing residential apartment has its own separate parking area on the on the west side of the building. Um, with a separate driveway and separate multiple spot spaces on that side. As far as the vehicle inside the building, that wouldn't be for repairs. That would just be to get the vehicles out of the weather and out of the way. And strictly for parking, there's no vehicle maintenance going on.
Storage of the vehicles then.
Correct, that's correct.
I think it would be well to show the parking spaces for the um apartment. Or residence or whatever we're going to call it. And um the access and the address for that. Part of the building.
So that that's actually on the plan, and I can bring that up again for you.
Yeah, that's what I'm trying to look at now, and I didn't.
The existing garage.
So they they have a dedicated driveway. That provides access to that side of the building. So this is the the apartment side of the building. So they have an existing garage there, a driveway, and a total of four parking spaces on that side of the site. So that's completely separate from the office side of the site. This is Carter Street. So there's their entrance right there. Whereas the rest of the site utilizes this entrance further down Carter Street.
But is that the exist, that's an existing garage, right? That outbuilding?
It's a, yes, an existing garage with its own dedicated driveway.
Okay, and it's for the apartment?
That's correct.
Okay, I think it's well that you show the the existing curb cuts so that we don't need to get into that. Have you been to Board of Health?
Uh, no, we we will if we need to, but as we're adding primarily a garage, um that would probably not. Be an increase in flow to the building.
Bylaw requires when you file a petition to have met with two people. Board of Health and Conservation. And for me, you need a letter that says you're okay. Or we have no jurisdiction. And I see there are some what look like wetlands. Are those wetlands down at the bottom?
Uh, correct. So everything's been offset outside of the jurisdiction of the Conservation Commission.
Right, but that.
We'll be happy to to get that information from those boards.
Yeah, if if you just meet with them and um get a letter from them saying, you know, it meets our requirements. And especially with the Board of Health, okay? So actually, what you're asking for as far as the use goes is you're gonna use it as office space. And indoor parking of vehicles for storage purposes. Is that correct?
That is correct.
So let's clearly define that the variance request. You're looking for a variance from the side lot, right?
I know that that's a special permit. The variance is related to the gross floor area.
Because you're covered under pre-existing non-conforming for the proximity to one side you said that you don't meet.
So the um the variance, the zoning bylaw restricts the gross floor area of commercial structures on this lot to three thousand. Gross floor area. And we're over that.
Like quite a bit.
Yeah, you're over eight hundred before you started, right?
Yes, the existing structure is over.
So you're almost doubling it.
Is any of that, when you talk about the square footage, you did mention something about a second story. Is the square footage you're counting? All on the first floor?
No, we we made a account of the entirety of the building.
Okay, could you tell us how much is up and how much is down?
We can break that down for you.
Okay, I think that, you know, as far as the footprint goes, that would be helpful. Because although you're adding twenty-eight hundred square feet to the building, you're um. You're not adding twenty-eight hundred square feet to the footprint, is that correct?
I know that the twenty-eight hundred square feet, the addition is is a oversized garage base. So that's the entirety of the footprint. There's no upstairs to it. It's an open bay.
Okay. Anyone else have questions?
I do. Um, did not receive any comments or complaints from a butters, is that correct?
Not that I'm aware of. We and we haven't received anything, have we?
I have not, and I don't see anybody in attendance other than Mr. Spalding, Gary Spalding, who I guess. Was said to be a business partner.
Yeah, and I think I saw Rich as an attendee, and my first question was for him. Which was um, there are two separate uses on this building. And I believe there needs to be a two-hour fire rate between the two different uses. And if he could just confirm that.
Okay, I'll allow him to talk. Is that okay, Lynn?
Uh, fine with me.
Okay, Rich, if you, yep, there he is.
Almost?
Hardly.
Just barely.
Any better?
Oh, yeah.
Okay. The two uses would be the apartment and the um office, which would probably create a one-hour separation between those two. And I don't know, like, I guess it's more of a question back to Mr. Roseberry is the building sprinkler, because that would that would affect the um. Separation between units as well.
Uh, no, the building does not currently um have a fire sprinkler system and the separation right how between the. The commercial building and the apartment is a is a concrete CMU block wall.
Which couldn't. That could be a two-hour. I mean, you'd have to know the details of it. I just wanted to confirm because I know that once you get over a certain amount of square footage with different uses, that it. Creates a different requirement between the two uses.
Yeah, they're they're totaling out around five thousand square feet, fifty-six hundred square feet. Again, as as they say, you do have an existing condition. Um, he does have a just a CMU. Separation between them. So that's that's probably a two-hour rating by itself.
Okay, as as long as you're good with it, I just wanted to make sure because it that would fall under, you know, health, safety, and welfare.
Right.
But I just suggested that you're going to the Board of Health and you're going to Conservation. Uh, how about uh just speaking with the fire chief or the fire prevention deputy? And having them say that it meets the requirements, it meets their requirements, would that be fair?
Alan, is that in your wheelhouse, in the nature of your business?
Yeah, I mean, I think the reality is I'm gonna, my architect is gonna prepare to prepare a code analysis addressing, you know, all the building code requirements and and chapter nine fire prevention requirements. So um, you know, that'll be part of the the permit application, assuming it gets approved.
Your father raised you well.
Thank you.
Um, but if, but for our purposes, it would, um, you know, for us to read the code and interpret it, I think is a stretch. So when you're doing that, maybe you could just run it by the fire chief or the deputy fire prevention person. Have them just say that it it meets what it needs to meet.
Yeah, I'd be happy to reach out to Lieutenant Paulino, no problem at all.
Anyone else have anything?
I just, um, I did notice a typo on the the maps we were given. Um, listed as the owner's address is 100 Peter Street. And I think it's just a typo, it should be 100 Carter Street.
You are correct, so we will certainly address that.
And again, I think one of the suggestions was that existing lighting or signage should probably be on here, just so that going forward, um, it's very clear as to what um is there or maybe there, or even if you think you're gonna put up a light, that it go on the plan.
Yeah, so we have reference if anything else happens.
It's a joy trying to find some of these old permits. Um, anybody else have anything? Okay, may I make a suggestion? That if you wish, Mr. Roseberry, to have us extend the hearing until next month so that you can gather, make any changes you want to the plans. Um, and um get what you did from the Board of Health, Conservation, and Fire Department.
Yes, please, I'd like to request extension and to next month's meeting, please.
Okay, um, was one other thing that I was toying with here. Oh, yeah, when when you come in for um approval of your site plan, um, we usually get um some kind of a vellum or what's the latest thing that they use at the Registry of Deeds?
Mylar?
Mylar, um, that has the um, has a place for the zoning board to sign and date. Um, so you might want to in, I'm sure you have a Mylar from which these were made, correct?
Uh, no, those are not really utilized anymore, but um we we can certainly give you a Mylar once you reach a point that um this could move forward. And I can put a signature block on subsequent revisions so that the board would have that area reserved.
Right, you have the date, okay. Um, the petitioner or agent of the petitioner has requested um a continuance of the hearing until our, what did we decide it was, April 13th? Well, I keep wanting to make it.
Or the 12th?
Yes. Um, and what time would would we want to do that, at seven o'clock, folks?
Sure. Yep.
So at, I entertain a motion that at the request of the petitioner, the hearing be continued until April 12th um at 7:00 PM.
So moved.
Second, okay. Um, we usually ask the petitioner to sign extensions. You can deal with the end um to get a copy of the extension that's needed. It just allows us to conduct the business that we need to do within the timeframe that's allotted in 40A.
I can send that.
Down to you.
Okay, there's a motion and a second. Is there any further discussion on the motion? If not, I'll take a roll call. Ginny?
Aye.
Jim?
Aye.
Danny?
Aye.
Pat?
Aye.
Susanna?
Aye.
Keith?
Aye.
And I'm an aye. Okay, we'll see you next month. You did, the plans were good, and I think that, you know, protect yourself and add on if you're going to make any changes to the plans. Please add on to um the existing plan. Any lighting or anything else, you know, parking, whatever. Uh, one thing you might want to take a look, we'll ask you to compute the green area. Okay, anything else? If not, we thank you, gentlemen, for attending, and we will see you next month, you're welcome to stay.
Thank you for your feedback, and we'll see you next month.
All right, thank you so much.
Good night.
Good night.
Night.
Okay. Gee, that's not bad. Um, I'll we continued the hearing um at what, 8:02, something like that, PM?
Correct.
So we're ready to do one, uh, 275 Central Street?
Correct, Mr. Yuradi isn't, if you'd like me to promote him.
Would you please? Mr. Yuradi is muted.
Muted and no camera.
There he is.
Hello?
Hi there, would you like to explain to the folks what has transpired this last month? Um, in the GADG hearing?
Yeah, I'm just, I'm just asking for, I guess, an extension to be on next month. I I mixed up the deadlines and I missed one of the newspaper deadlines, so I wasn't able to get into both.
Okay, so we cannot open a hearing um because it wasn't proper posting. So what we can do is I can ask my colleagues if they have any objection to rather than asking Mr. Yuradi to refile to a um allow him to use the current petition as filed and um repost um with a new date and time. How do you folks feel?
I'm fine with them just reposting, and we continue next month.
Yep.
Mm-hmm.
Okay, fine, I'd entertain a motion that um due to the lack of proper notification for tonight's meeting, that we allow um the petitioner for 275 Central Street to use his um existing petition and allow for a change in date and time, including reposting of the hearing. Long-winded. Okay, Ms. Doria, thank you. Is there a second, please?
I'll second.
Okay, we have a motion um that has been seconded. Just as far as discussion goes, Mr. Yuradi, ha- have you been able to um get uh your proof of interest in the lot over which the access and egress will pass?
Yes.
Have you provided it to the board?
No, not yet, we're, we have a closing date tomorrow, so assuming that goes well, we should be fine.
Okay, well, you do understand that we need something before the he- the hearing next month because we need to see that you have um interest. Now, whether that's in the form of a deed, a copy of the deed, or um if it's a purchase and sale agreement or an easement, I mean, that those are the kinds of things that we need from you if you're gonna be using a piece of land that is not listed in your name.
Okay.
You'll be able to do that for us?
Yes.
So you're buying that land regardless, right? It's, there's not a contingency upon this hearing, right?
No.
Okay. Have, have you just reviewed, because we run into this all the time, you know, all the lighting, signage, all of that stuff, right?
Yes.
Okay. For when we do hold the hearing. Okay, I think there's a motion and a second, correct?
Yes, but we did not designate um the date and time.
Okay, so we're going to do uh 100 Carter Street at 7:00. Let's schedule Mr. Yuradi for 7:30 unless someone objects on the April 12th. Now, Mr. Yuradi, that at this time is expected to be in person.
Oh, okay.
Um, the ability to hold remote hearings and meetings for um municipal boards is through the end of this month. There is a possibility that it could be extended. If it is extended, it would be the board's desire um to do it remotely. But um as of right now, we would need to plan to hold the hearing in our hearing room, what is it, 227, Leanne?
226, I believe.
Okay. Well, those two numbers will get you close. Down it, it's down at the end of the hall. Um, we have a hearing room on the right-hand side. Um, so when I'll revamp your um hearing notice, and um you can um use that revamped one. I will give an alternative, I will say that we're gonna meet in room 226 because I trust uh Leanne much more than I trust myself. And I'll also say, please check the website for a potential change in venue. And I'll list the um April date and time.
Okay.
You have any questions of us?
No, no questions.
Okay, so um do you we're gonna continue the hearing at your request, correct?
Yes.
Okay, you will need to update your letters from the Board of Health and the Conservation um if for no other reason than um the fact that it includes another lot. Then for the last time. Plus, I I was surprised to see it's been over a year since we've seen you.
It's been a while, yeah.
Okay, um we have yet to take a vote, I'll go around and do a roll call vote. Ginny?
Aye.
Jim?
Aye.
Danny?
Aye.
Pat?
Aye.
Um, Susanna?
Aye.
Keith?
Aye.
And I'm an aye. Okay, if there's nothing further, we have extended this hearing until next month, and we will see you, Mr. Yuradi, on April 12th at 7:30. I warn you that if the continuance of the Carter Street hearing potential is there to go over, so um we'll ask for your patience if we're not ready for you right at 7:30.
Okay, no problem.
We'll see you next month.
All right, thank you all.
Does anyone um and it either on the board or Mr. Hanks or um have something that they'd like to ask the board?
Mr. Hanks does not.
Oh, that's a shame, we always look forward to conversing with you.
Now, you do, you want to reverse that, is there anything you want to ask me instead?
Well, uh, anyone have any questions for our building commissioner? Okay, if not, um, does anyone have anything else, or do we want to entertain a motion to adjourn?
No, actually, I do, I I do want to go back to the the two different uses in one building.
Okay.
Um, I just I I really don't know how that fits in with the zoning because most of our zoning is just for one use type.
Yeah, so they're gonna be considered legal preexisting nonconforming, correct? And that's hence what's prompting the special permit, just because they're preexisting nonconforming, being like you said, that they have two uses within, two use groups within one, on one parcel. So I think accessory apartment probably, uh, I think you said it was there since the 80s, so that predates possibly predates the the requirement for any special permit for an accessory apartment, other than like Lynn stated, is that when the bylaw came about, people had five years to to now up them. I don't know what you'd do in this case, because it's not a, it's not linked to a to a primary residence. Maybe if he did come forward with a um a special primary request for the accessory apartment.
Well, I think the um interpretation needs to be made by yourself, Rich. Um, I think that I questioned, you know, can you have, it's an accessory apartment. When they changed the bylaw, they had five years to make them quote legal. And I don't know where that leaves this accessory apartment. And I don't know if if accessory apartment, I'd have to go back and reread it, doesn't say something about um relating to a residence. So is it the residence or is it an accessory apartment?
But either way, it's two completely separate uses, and I, and I'm just trying to remember back, you know, back in the Dark Ages when I was an architect, but um it's a concern with um fire hazard because one side would have smoke detectors in somebody's home, but the other side wouldn't necessarily have that, and that's why there had to be a definite break or it had to be sprinklers with um with the two different uses. I even had that issue. with the two different uses. I even had that issue in my, my barn, where my farm stand is, where I had to limit the size of the actual farm stand, because the rest of it was hay storage, and if I got any bigger on farm stand part of it, I would have to either install sprinklers or create, um, a fire separation between the two uses. So, that's where I'm coming from, I, I think we have to make sure that the safety is there for that accessory apartment.
So what's, what's going to happen, uh, is, years ago, the building code allowed for separation of, of, you, you could put a firewall and then call it two separate buildings, even though they're attached, and we've, the, the code in Massachusetts has done away with firewalls in between, so it's still considered one, um, total square footage structure, but what is going to happen to them is that being an existing building, um, under the existing building code, he's going to have to do a code analysis, because there's, uh, three different levels, and he's going to be definitely triggered level two, so level one is if you just, um, replacing light kind, you're not adding doors, windows, or, uh, reconfiguring space. Once you reconfigure space, then there's, there's different check-offs that go down on the existing building code that says, well, now you need a fire alarm, or now you might need a sprinkler system, so, so his architect will have to do that, code analysis, breakdown, showing how he's going to comply with a, um, on, on the existing building code.
If I'm correct, there's a cement block wall between the apartment and the existing building.
That, that's correct, that, that's, that's what he stated. But now, all that being said, and sticking with Susanna, is that, there's a strong probability, because it's a residence, when, uh, whenever there's a residence involved, that, that's your, your highest protection level, because you always, you know, people are going to be living in there, sleeping in there, and, you know, the business people go away at the end of the day, so the building code is always trying to protect the residence. So there is a probability that once he goes through the existing building code scenario, that he will have to sprinkle that building, which is his trade, so it's not going to be, I don't know, it shouldn't be any, but, there's a strong probability that he will have to sprinkle that building.
I think we're going to have to depend upon the fire department to make a decision.
No, this is, this is not the fire department, because the building code tells you when you need a, need sprinkler system and the fire alarms. So, so, but, but once it's installed, then it gets handed off to the fire department, the fire department is a, is a maintenance code. So the building code tells you when it's required, tells you where it's required. Once it's installed, then it gets handed off to the building, uh, excuse me, the fire code, which is a, a, a maintenance code, the fire department makes sure that's, it keeps, it's kept functional and, and in operation.
Okay, thank you. Um, I'm just looking at five twenty accessory apartment. And it's a special permit, and it says the Board of Appeals may grant a special permit for use of a group of rooms in a single family residence as an accessory apartment, subject to the criteria and conditions herein. So, I just scanning here, the, uh, accessory apartment and indoor apartment have to be part of a residence, have to be an adjunct to a residence.
Right.
I'm wondering if you would consider these living quarters um, a primary residence.
I, I think you are spot on, because again, it's, it's, it's not a accessory to, uh, the primary residence, there's no other residence there. So I'm not sure why in the nineteen eighty-two, or whatever vintage, that they went and gone to such a requirement, permit. You know, I, I can look in the nineteen eighties bylaws and see what the requirements were back then, as to why they, they went forward with a special permit to put that there. But to your, to your point, as, as a accessory apartment, is, is accessory to a, a primary residence, there's no primary residence, so it may be that it's, it's just a, a residence.
Well, that's going to have to be your call, Rich, we love you.
I got it.
I believe back in the day when that was put in, it was a primary residence for Ben.
It was, Danny.
And then they put that little garage out there for a used car lot.
Right.
So there we go, we got, we got history on our side.
Yeah.
Restaurant, and it's been a lot of things, right?
Yeah, that was a good restaurant.
Danny's.
Then it was Danny's, remember when it was Danny's?
Then he started with the first restaurant.
A breakfast.
Yeah, and then it went to Crosman.
Yeah.
There used to be a, a, uh, barbershop in the back.
I don't remember that.
Well, that was a. Actually started for, uh, Jermaine Meat Market and a grocery store.
Yeah. I think that was before we moved to town.
Yeah. I was, uh, twelve fifteen.
Is it the same Jermaines that was up, uh, at the split of Lancaster and Randall Room?
Yes.
Yeah.
And he's got another, had another store over in Marlboro.
Oh, mine. People used to knock on my door, asking why Jermaines was closed after they closed Dan, and I'm like, I don't know, why would I know that?
Because you live in town, and it's a small town, and they assume everybody knows everything, right? Okay, Rich, well, you'll take a look at that between now and next month, and maybe decide where we stand as far as the dwelling goes.
Yes.
Whether it's an accessory apartment, or a primary residence, or exactly what it is. One of the things too, and I'm going to send super sleuth, Jim, um, you couldn't find anything out online, uh, on the Registry of Deeds for these permits, right?
Correct.
Okay, I, it would be helpful if we could find some of them, so maybe we'll go digging between now and then. Um, maybe Ginny and, um, Pat, when we get some records out of the basement and they start their project, they'll be able to find something, there may be something buried in the bowels of the, um, town hall. Does anybody else have anything? Oh, did you, did you hear me ask who owned that other land, what spalding it was?
Mm-hmm, yeah.
Because, you know, we can require that they combine the lots if they were in the same name.
Oh, okay.
Uh, this came up, do you remember when we did, um, Oak Street? And we were doing, um, an expansion of a pre-existing non-conforming?
Yes.
The landscaping?
Yes, well, we weren't involved in landscaping, although he does evidently have a landscaping business out of his house. Um, but one of the questions was, we tried to cajole him into, he had a lot of land around it, and it's a very small lot. We tried to cajole him into including the land, well, since then I went to one of the CPTC, um, programs, and the answer to the question was, if you own, you know, if you have a pre-existing non-conforming, but you own land around it, uh, at the time you want to expand, you can be required to, um, combine the lots, which I thought was kind of interesting, I never knew that before, I wish we had known it, you know, I wish I was aware of it before we had that other hearing. Okay, folks, I think we're just about done here. Nobody has anything else that they can, um, impose upon Rich for?
No, thank you.
Silence is golden, I like it.
Chris, Keith still in the audience?
She is.
Um, does she have anything she wants to say to us?
He does not have her hand up.
Okay, please put your hand up, Chris, if you'd like to be recognized. And Louise Jand is in the.
Chris, just put her hand up, I'll allow her to speak.
Hi.
Hello.
Just wanted to say, good meeting. I might, my notes are probably poor, but, um, it was a good meeting.
Thank you. We have a good group here, don't we, guys?
You do.
Well, thank you so much, Chris.
Is there? Anything I can do for you all?
No, thank you.
Anyone have any suggestions?
Keep up the good work.
Oh, thanks. I'll try.
Thank you, Chris, is Louise still in the audience?
She is, she's, she has the ability to talk if she'd like.
Do you have anything you'd like to share with us, Louise?
The only thing I would have to share is that, um, the, um, conservation restriction on the property associated with Highland Ridge is almost completed, uh, Sudbury Valley trustees. I have, um, I'm now in ownership of the land.
Well, you, you, conservation has worked long and hard on that.
Pardon?
Conservation has worked long and hard on that.
Oh, yes, we have, right, so, um, there is, you know, conservation restriction is going to be, uh, recording everything. So, we're very happy about that.
Thank you for your input, Louise.
Mm-hmm.
Anybody on the board have anything else? Okay, I'll send you that spreadsheet, uh, Keith, and you can sort the two of them and add the new ones in, if you will, please. Um, no, I'm sorry, Jim. I'll, I'll send, yeah, no, it is Keith.
It is Keith, yeah.
I am exhausted, we had a horrendous full committee meeting last night.
What's in that coffee cup?
Yeah, I, I'm, I was going to take it intravenously tonight, but it didn't work out. So, um, I'll send that to you, Keith, and, and will you do that for us, please?
Will do.
Okay.
Thank you.
All right, folks, I'll entertain a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
Okay, great, did you get a first and a second there, Leanne?
I heard Jim, I felt like a distinguish.
Jenny, Jenny moved, Jim seconded, I believe.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, there's a motion and a second to adjourn the meeting, I'll take a roll call vote. Ginny?
Aye.
Jim?
Aye.
Uh, Dennis?
Aye.
Pat?
Aye.
Susanna?
Aye.
Keith?